Bonsoir, nous allons poursuivre les travaux. Excellence, mesdames et messieurs, je déclare ouverte la 23e réunion de la 45e session du Conseil des Droits de l'Homme. Nous allons maintenant procéder à l'examen du document final de la République démocratique populaire Laos sur la base du rapport du groupe de travail sur l'examen périodique universel de la République démocratique populaire Laos et son additif. Ces documents ainsi que l'information qui sera présentée par la délégation de la République démocratique populaire Laos constituent le document final de l'examen et seront adoptés par une décision standard du Conseil. J'ai à présent l'honneur de donner la parole à son excellence Monsieur Kam In Kichadette, ambassadeur extraordinaire et plénipotentière représentant permanent de la République démocratique populaire Laos auprès de l'Office des Nations Unies et des organisations internationales à Genève pour présenter les informations additionnelles sur l'examen. Excellence, vous avez la parole.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, excellencies. I will make a statement in two parts. The first part is for the sharing some information and the second part is the conclusion. Lao PediR is pleased to attend the 45th session of the Human Rights Council for the adoption of its third circle UPR outcome report. The Lao PediR emphasizes that the UPR process is an international forum for the constructive dialogue and protection and promotion of human rights. The UPR provides a great opportunity for Laos to highlight it in the walls for the promotion and protection of human rights. At the third circle, UPR review in January, on the 10th February 2020, the National Committee of the Human Rights organized a series of workshops, debriefing and consultation with the participants of conservative history and sector, including civil society organizations, and all comments have been taken into consideration by the government. Mr. Vice President, I would like to inform the council that the Lao PediR supports 160 out of 226 recommendations, notes and partially support 66 recommendations. In summary, the Lao PediR supports more than 70% of all recommendations. 160 recommendations are in line with the constitutions, law and realities of Laos and they also relate with the Laos prioritized commitment for its next cycle of the implementation of human rights, promotion and protection. Indeed, the number of the supported recommendations have already seen some progress and some notable changes since the last UPR cycle. Some are already being implemented while others supplement in the near future. For the significantly recommendations, the Lao PediR can partially support while others are inapplicable. Some recommendations that are noted do not mean that we will not implement at all and some of them are part of our ongoing human rights efforts while the order requires further considerations. Furthermore, there are some recommendations that are incomplete, incompatible with the constitution laws and do not reflect the reality of the country. The detail of the reply to the 226 recommendations along with the explanation have been submitted in a form of the Lao PediR addendum to the report of the working group on the UPR document number A/ HRC/44/6/1. I am honored to inform the council of Laos position towards the recommendation as follows. On human rights and all the ratifications, Laos has supported the recommendation on constitutionalistic ratification to ILO Convention Number 189 and the Mystic Worker to Advance and International Convention on Protection of All Person from Enforced Disappearance. We need more time to study and provide all the necessary conditions to become a party of the Convention on Protection of the Right of migrant workers and their family members, the robe status of the International Criminal Court. ILO Convention Number 105 and 169, the UNESCO Convention 162 and the Second Obstacle Protocol to the International Convention on Serial and Political Rights, an obstacle protocol to the Convention against torture and all the cruel inhuman or degrading treatment of participants. Regarding the recommendation on invitation to the UN Special Reporters, Lao PediR reinterests in engagement with the said mechanism shall be based on readiness for both sides. Nevertheless, Lao PediR recognize the important roles of the special procedure for the protection and promotion of human rights in accordance with the international law and the UN Charter. In the previous circle, the Lao PediR provided good cooperation with the special procedure, including the invitation of the Special Reporter on the cell of children, child prostitution and child pornography to visit to Laos in 2017 and a Special Reporter on Human Rights and Poverty in 2019. The Lao PediR will continue cooperating with the special procedure, including extending country visit invitations on case by case as appropriate time. With regard to recommendations on the domestic adequacy for promotion and protection of human rights, the Lao PediR had established the National Committee on Human Rights since 2012, which is known as the overarching the promotion and protection of human rights in the Lao PediR and coordination for implementing reporting and follow up the UPR recommendations, engagement with relevant mechanisms under the Human Rights Councils and all the treaty bodies including the Human Rights Committee, the Committee on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights, the Committee on Elimination and Russell Discrimination and the Committee on Against Torture, the National Commission on Advancement of Women and Motor Child Implementing Follow Up Reporting the SEDO and CRC and two political convention on the right of child, the National Committee on Person with Disability and the Endile as the mechanism for implementing reporting or following up the convention on person with disability. The current environment of the Lao PediR comes for maintaining of the existing domestic mechanism to continue to strive towards self strengthening and improvement for the human rights, protection and promotion for the Laos multi-ethnic people. Why maintaining good cooperation with the international and regional human rights mechanisms concerning recommendation on adoption of the comprehensive anti-discrimination registration and gender discrimination? The Lao PediR has been making notable progress on anti-discrimination for instance. The constitution explicitly stimulus or prohibit of the discrimination on various bases. Additionally, the Lao PediR have adopted specific laws and legislation with the provision on anti-discrimination and against women, comprehensive gender equality promotion and non-discrimination against persons with disabilities, ethnic groups and religion. The penalty code of the Lao PediR was adopted and propagated in 2018, describes discriminative behavior as criminal offenses. Nonetheless, Lao PediR is not ready to support the recommendation Number 46 for this cycle. Concerning the right of LGBT, Laos does not restrict or prohibit them from social activities. However, the Lao PediR does not support the recommendations which are not in line with the national culture values and morals. For the recommendation on the death penalty and the juror moratorium, Lao PediR reinterests that it has implemented the factor moratorium for many years. Moreover, those who have been imposed in the death sentence do get considered based on good behavior and compliance with regulations to receive commutation of their sentence on special national occasion to reduce the life imprisonment. In 2017, the National Assembly considered the penalty code with the true debate and voted on the death penalty law and the result was in favor of keeping the death penalty law then it was adopted and propagated in 2018. The perpetration of the death penalty is consistent with Article 6 of the ICCPR. Therefore, the Lao PediR cannot support the recommendation that call for total abolishment of the juror moratorium of the death penalty. Regarding to the recommendation on the amendment, the registration on the right of freedom of speech, expression, information, the Lao PediR cannot support some of those recommendations on removing the few limitations stated in the law on information and other relating legislation because those clauses are not restricted to allow multi-ethnic people from expressing their views in the society but rather those rights to freedom of expression should be fully enjoying with a heightened sense of ethics and morality. We align with Article 19 of the ICCPR. Moreover, Laos government has provided facilitation for the Laotian multi-ethnic people to enjoy their rights to expression towards social and public administration issue through the various channels in accordance with the law. The Constitution Law on Media, Penal Code and all the related news clearly stimulate the right to freedom of expression of the Laotian multi-ethnic people. The provisions are in line with international norms and principles and we noticed some those related to the recommendations. For the recommendation on investigation cases of enforced disappearance, the Lao PediR cannot support them at its official investigation order. Must be issued based on credible claim, factual information and evidence. Regarding the recommendation on missing case of Sombath Somphon, I would like to tell the council that the Investigation Committee is a continued investigation with a purpose to bring the perpetrator to a justice. In the Lao PediR or ethnic group are equal before the law without any discrimination, the state respects and protects all religious activities and believers. For that purpose, the government had adopted the decree 315 on administration and protection of religious activities which exclusively consulted with government officials and religious groups in the Lao PediR. Mr. Vice President, on this occasion, on behalf of the Laos government, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all the stinky delegates, international and non-governmental organizations for their very support and assistance to the Lao PediR, particularly on human rights protection and promotion. Finally, the Lao PediR welcomes further constructive reviews of the views from international community for the UPR adoption of Lao PediR today. I thank you, Vice President.
Je vous remercie, excellence, pour votre discours. Avant de donner la parole aux États membres et observateurs pour leurs commentaires sur le document final de l'examen, je voudrais informer la délégation que le temps de parole défini est de 1 minute 30 secondes pour tous les États. Le premier orateur sera Singapour.
Mister Vice President, Singapore comments Lao People's Democratic Republic, Lao PediR for its constructive participation in its third UPR. We note that Lao PediR has accepted 160 recommendations, including two from Singapore. We commend Lao PediR for consulting widely with relevant stakeholders, including civil society, on all of its received recommendations following its UPR in January. We encourage Lao PediR to fully implement its accepted recommendations and to report on the progress made or ahead of its next UPR. We welcome the Lao PediR's assurance at the adoption of its UPR recommendations in January that it will continue to work, to closely work and cooperate with all human rights mechanisms with a view to improving the promotion and protection of human rights. We note from the addendum to the UPR report that is the duty of the Laos government to search for missing Laos citizens, including Mr. Sombath Somphon, the Laotian spouse of a Singapore citizen. We hope that the Laotian authorities will resolve the case expeditiously and bring about the much needed relief to his family. As a fellow ASEAN member, we wish the Lao PediR continued success in improving the lives of all its people and in achieving its goal of graduating from LDC status in 2024. With these comments, Singapore endorses the adoption of the UPR working group's report on the Lao PediR by the council. Thank you.
Merci. L'orateur suivant est Sri Lanka. Vous avez la parole.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. Sri Lanka comments the government of Lao PediR for its constructive engagement during the third cycle of the Universal Periodic Review in January 2020. We acknowledge the strong resolve by the government of Lao PediR to develop its human rights system through institutional structures and normative frameworks. We take note of the inclusion in the Amendment Constitution, a stipulation that the state acknowledges, respects, protects and guarantees human rights, including fundamental rights of the citizens in accordance to the law. Sri Lanka welcomes the creation of a legal database in the form of the Lao law application, allowing the people to access legal information and encourage in providing their comments to draft laws. We are also pleased to note the efforts by Lao PediR to address the issue of children dropping out of schools and implementation of a policy to reduce the child education cost for parents. Sri Lanka recommends the adoption of the third UPR report of Lao PediR and wishes the government in success in implementing all of its accepted recommendations. I thank you.
Merci. Je donne la parole à la Thaïlande.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. Thailand welcomes the active participation of the Lao PediR in the UPR process. We appreciate the Lao PediR's ongoing efforts to promote and protect human rights and to advance SDG's implementation. We also commend its effective COVID-19 response. We welcome the Lao PediR's acceptance of 163 UPR recommendations, including Thailand's two recommendations on first, promoting human rights education and training and second, on incorporating the rights of women, children and persons with disabilities in its National Socioeconomic Development Plan and taking integrated approaches in the SDG's implementation and human rights policies. Thailand encourages the Lao PediR to consider conducting voluntary midterm report and maintaining regular dialogues with relevant national stakeholders with a view to keeping the momentum for effective UPR implementation. Thailand endorses the adoption of the UPR working group's report on the Lao PediR by the council. As a friendly neighbor and a fellow ASEAN member, Thailand wishes the Lao PediR all the success in translating accepted UPR recommendations into positive changes on the ground. Thailand stands ready to support and cooperate with the Lao PediR in its efforts to implement these accepted recommendations. Thank you.
Merci. Je donne la parole au Royaume-Uni.
Mister Vice President, the United Kingdom welcomes the Lao People's Democratic Republic's engagements with the UPR. We commend the Lao PediR for its cooperation and engagement with UN treaty bodies and special procedures as well as its economic development and poverty reduction strategies and work on children's rights, including its very effective response to COVID-19. The UK notes the Lao PediR statement that the constitution and relating laws guarantee freedom of expression. However, we remain concerned about restrictions on foreign news agencies and the use of intimidation against critics of the state. We urge the government to promote and protect the right to freedom of expression for all. The UK remains concerned that the case of Sombath Somphon is yet to be resolved and ask that investigations into all enforced disappearances are carried out thoroughly. We welcome Lao PediR's support for the UK's recommendations to develop and implement a national action plan on human trafficking and modern slavery and to repeal all legislation inhibiting freedom of expression. However, we regret that Lao PediR did not support the UK's recommendation to undertake impartial thorough and transparent investigations into all enforced disappearances. We remain open to discussing these recommendations with the Lao PediR and would welcome further discussion on next steps for implementation. The UK encourages the Lao PediR to engage fully with the UN and the international community on their accepted recommendations and to implement them fully. Thank you.
Merci. Je donne la parole à l'UNICEF.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. UNICEF comments the government of Lao PediR for its engagement with the UPR and for the acceptance of almost all child rights related recommendations. We acknowledge the efforts to realize the rights of every child in line with the CRC and SDGs and take note of the important progress made in child well-being. We welcome the acceptance of recommendations to further strengthen national health, education and child protection systems to provide quality services for the most vulnerable children. It is encouraging to know that the government will further ensure the full and effective implementation of the CRC. UNICEF welcomes the decision to continue incorporating the SDG targets into the Ninth National Socioeconomic Development Plan, ensuring that children's rights are well reflected and to work towards enhancing children's access to social services which are aligned with the Lao generation 2030 commitments. The decisions to further address child trafficking, early marriage and infant mortality and to improve the quality of education demonstrate the strong commitment of the government to improve children's lives and develop human capital. In accepting these recommendations, we see a clear commitment towards reducing multi-dimensional poverty which is important in a country where 50% of children suffer from three or more deprivation. We regret however that the recommendation to develop a comprehensive national strategy on the rights of the child with a specific budget line and monitoring mechanisms was only noted. UNICEF stands ready to continue supporting the government in realizing the rights of every child. Thank you.
Je passe. Je donne la parole au Généseul.
Gracias, Vice President. Damos una calurosa bienvenida a la ilustre delegación de la República Democrática Popular Laos y agradecemos su presentación. Nos complace el gran compromiso del gobierno de Laos con la promoción y protección de los derechos humanos y su amplia cooperación con el mecanismo de EPO. En un diálogo franco y constructivo pedimos apreciar los esfuerzos de Laos para aplicar las recomendaciones aceptadas de EPO. Valoramos positivamente la reducción de la pobreza que para el año 2018 es de un 15.5% de los distritos rumbo al cumplimiento de los ODS. Nos complacen las aceptadas políticas impulsadas por el gobierno en el ámbito de la educación, la salud y la reducción de la pobreza, dispensando una protección eficaz a las familias, en especial las más vulnerables. Felicitamos efusivamente al gobierno de Laos y alarguramos todo el éxito en la implementación de las recomendaciones aceptadas de EPO. Por las razones expuestas, recomendamos la adopción de ese informe. Muchas gracias.
Merci. Vietnam a la parole.
Mister Vice President, Vietnam warmly welcomes the delegation of the Lao People's Democratic Republic to the final adoption of the UPR outcome and appreciate their construction engagement with the UPR process. We commend Laos for accepting more than 70% of the recommendations it received at the 35th session of the UPR working group this January, including our three recommendations. We thank Laos for accepting our recommendations on poverty reduction and socio-economic development and acknowledge the efforts made by the government of Laos in this regard. We also welcome the commitment of Laos to our recommendation on improving access to affordable medical services and educational opportunities for its people in remote areas. In closing, my delegation urges the council to adopt the final UPR outcome of the Lao People's Democratic Republic by consensus. I thank you, Mister Vice President.
Merci. Je donne la parole à la Belgique.
Mister Vice President, Belgium welcomes the commitment of the Lao People's Democratic Republic during this UPR. My delegation notes with appreciation that Laos accepted the recommendations made by Belgium, in particular to ratify the convention for the protection of all persons from enforced disappearance and to ensure that any restrictions to the exercise of the freedom of expression and peaceful assembly comply with the requirements of Articles 19 and 21 of the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. Belgium is interested to know what concrete measures are envisaged to implement these recommendations and will be attentive to their implementation. Belgium notes however that its other recommendation with regard to the ratification of the Second Protocol to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights aiming at the abolition of the death penalty has not been accepted. Belgium considers that this is an important recommendation and therefore invites the authorities to reconsider their position. Thank you, Mister Vice President.
Merci. Brunei Darussalam, vous avez la parole.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. Brunei Darussalam wishes to thank his Excellency Kichda Death Ambassador and Representative Lao PediR for update on his country's progress since its review in January 2020. Brunei Darussalam commands Lao PediR's efforts to promote and protect the rights of children to education and welcomes their continuous advances in healthcare for mothers and children in the country. Brunei Darussalam is pleased that Lao PediR has accepted 163 recommendations, including the two recommendations from Brunei. This reaffirms Lao PediR's continued commitment to the promotion and protection of the human rights of its people and we wish Lao PediR success in its implementation efforts. Mister Vice President, Brunei Darussalam in this regard would recommend for the adoption of the working group report of the UPR of Lao PediR. Thank you.
Merci. La Chine a la parole. Merci. Cuba, vous avez la parole.
Gracias, señor presidente. Cuba da una calidad bienvenida a la delegación de Laos y felicita al país por el amplio número de recomendaciones aceptadas. Nos congratula que las recomendaciones realizadas por nuestra delegación cuenten con su apoyo. En ese sentido, les exhortamos a continuar dando prioridad a las acciones para eliminar la pobreza y mejorar la calidad y el alcance de su sistema de educación y salud, en particular en zonas remotas, para seguir mejorando el nivel de vida de su población. Destacamos su compromiso con el mecanismo y les deseamos éxitos en la implementación de las recomendaciones aceptadas durante el examen y apoyamos la adopción del informe por este consejo. Muchas gracias.
Merci. Je donne la parole à la République populaire et démocratique de Corée.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. DPRK delegation appreciate Lao PediR for its sincere and constructive participation through the cycle UPR process. The interactive dialogue with the delegation of Lao PediR during the 35th session of the UPR working group in January 2020 was a successful opportunity to fully understand Laos' PediR's policy and experience for the promotion and protection of human rights in the country. Particularly, the significant achievement was made in the promotion and protection of human rights, including implementation of the 10-year strategic development plan for 2016-2025 draws special attention deserving our commendation. While taking note of the report of the working group as well as the additional information provided by the delegation, we welcome Lao PediR's acceptance of many of the recommendations, including DPRK's, as a full demonstration of its will to make a including DPRK's, as a full demonstration of its will to make further efforts in the fields of human rights. My delegation wishes Laos PDR all the best and great success in its future endeavor for promotion and protection of human rights and support the adoption of UPR outcome on the Laos PDR by Human Rights Council. Thank you.
Merci, je donne la parole à l'Égypte.
谢谢主席。我感谢它所做的工作， 为了反对政府的制度， 在实施活动期间， 它得到了广泛的关注。我赞成老挝政府的政策， 谦让和保护人权。特别是关于土地的国有制， 对妇女和儿童， 国家土地的国有制， 对妇女和儿童， 老挝的国有制， 对土地的国有制， 对种族歧视， 我感谢老挝民主共和党， 对种族歧视， 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 和对种族歧视， 老挝政府， 对种族歧视， 在种族歧视， 在种族歧视， 谢谢主席。
Je vous remercie. Il s'agit du dernier orateur à qui nous pouvions accorder la parole. Les discours qui n'ont pu être prononcés faute de temps seront comme d'habitude postés sur l'extra net. Nous passons à la liste des orateurs, des autres parties prenantes pour leurs observations sur le document final de l'examen. Je donne la parole à Alliance Defending Freedom.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. ADF International appreciates the commitment of the Laos People's Democratic Republic to reviewing and amending its decree 315, as well as implementing new mechanisms to streamline administrative procedures and eliminate discrimination of religious minorities by local officials. To the same effect, we commend the government's openness to providing countrywide seminars and trainings on the rights of religious minorities to public officials, police, and other key actors. We further welcome the Laos government's willingness to ensure accountability for acts of violence, discrimination, and persecution of ethnic and religious minorities, including by strengthening access to justice and the independence of the judiciary. In this regard, we look forward to the establishment of a mechanism for individuals to appeal to a national authority for arrests and decisions enacted by local officials, ensuring that they conform with human rights standards and do not arbitrarily target Christians and other religious minorities. Mr. Vice President, at the outcome of this review cycle, Laos accepted recommendations relating to the protection of refugees and asylum seekers and the thorough investigation of acts of violence committed against them. However, we deeply regret the government's unwillingness to acknowledge the human rights violations suffered in its territory by Hmong and Montagnard Christians fleeing from persecution in Vietnam. These include arbitrary arrests, violence, and even expulsion. We call upon the Laos government to put into practice its commitments to fully upholding the rights of these vulnerable groups, including respecting the international principle of non-refoulement. Likewise, we regret that the Laos government has rejected calls to amend decree 238 despite its detrimental impact on the activities of religious groups, both registered and unregistered. In particular, unregistered groups face serious curtailments to their freedom of association as well as numerous reported cases of abuse by local officials. We reiterate the need...
Merci, je donne la parole à Amnesty International.
We welcome the discussion of human rights in the Laos People's Democratic Republic. We regret the state did not accept recommendations on steps to abolish the death penalty, to ratify all international human rights treaties and protocols, to take specific measures to investigate grave human rights violations, including cases of enforced disappearance and torture in the country, to establish a national human rights commission, and to amend legislation to protect peaceful exercise of rights to freedom of expression, assembly, and association. Madam President, we note Laos PDR's stated commitment to improving human rights protection. We welcome the undertaking to ratify the Convention for Protection of All Persons from Enforced Disappearance and urge this be done without reservations. We regret that the state has still to implement recommendations it supported at the previous UPR, including on impunity for the enforced disappearance of Sombat Somfon and treaty ratification. We regret Laos PDR did not accept recommendations on investigating the situation of missing Thai pro-democracy activists and Laos political activists feared to have been subjected to enforced disappearances. Madam President, we welcome Laos PDR's undertaking to release those detained solely for exercising their rights to freedom of expression, peaceful assembly, and association. Despite the state's assertion at the UPR review that it protects these rights, men and women are still imprisoned and continue to be arbitrarily detained for their peaceful exercise of these rights. This includes individuals who have spoken out online, who have criticized officials, or taken part in peaceful assemblies. We also welcome Laos PDR's support for recommendations and observance of international standards on land acquisition and its displacement. Communities displaced by state land acquisition continue to report they were not adequately consulted or compensated and have suffered damage to their livelihoods and to their environment. Thank you.
Merci, je donne la parole à Christian Solidarity Worldwide par vidéo.
Thank you, Madam President. CSO welcomes Laos' cooperation with the UPR process and acceptance of recommendations relating to the right to freedom of religion or belief. While there have been some improvements in the protection of the right during the reporting period, weak rule of law, ambiguous terms, and obstacles to registration undermine FOB for Laos religious communities. We welcome the acceptance of recommendations calling for Laos to review and amend decree 315, but regret that Laos noted the recommendation on allowing all religious communities to meet and conduct activities freely regardless of registration, citing decree 315 as justification for doing so. Arbitrary, vague, and discriminatory practices and procedures pertaining to religious groups must cease. Over the past decade, there has been a reduction in the number of long-term Christian prisoners of conscience. However, in general, improvements to FOB are mostly restricted to urban areas. In rural areas, efforts to promote and protect FOB can be undermined by social hostilities and weak rule of law at the local level, thereby restricting the manifestation and practice of minority religions and restricting the ability of citizens to choose and change their religion or belief. Christians in rural areas have reported instances of arbitrary detention, forced eviction, confiscation of land and livestock, destruction of property, harassment, and discrimination. In light of these concerns, we welcome Laos' acceptance of recommendations 115.48 and 115.118, and further call on the government to immediately and unconditionally release anyone detained in connection with the peaceful practice and observance of their religion or belief. Both state and non-state perpetrators of violations must be brought to justice. Laos' acceptance of a recommendation calling for guarantees to freedom of expression of the press, assembly, association, as well as freedom of religion or belief in accordance with the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights is a welcome step. However, we urge Laos to review its declaration pertaining to Article 18 of the ICCPR and ensure that the guarantees enshrined in the Article 18 are applied to all citizens. Finally, we urge UN member states to monitor and assist the implementation of recommendations made during the review. Thank you.
Merci, je donne la parole à United Nations Watch par vidéo.
Madam President, United Nations Watch is deeply concerned over the precarious humorous situation in Laos. In a country where 59% of the population is below 25 years old and 71% lives in rural areas, child rights must be taken more seriously. First, with regards to education, secondary school enrollment is still lagging behind, being at 78%. Girls from certain ethnic communities and lower wealth quintas are at an educational disadvantage. We echo the UNESCO call in Laos to ratify the Convention against Discrimination in Education. Secondly, the issue of child labor in Laos is highly worrying. According to the ILO, 178,000 children are subjected to child labor, and majority are children from rural areas, and over 50% of them are girls. Third, girls' youth marriage and early pregnancies are preventing girls from getting out of poverty. According to UNICEF, Laos has the highest rate of child marriage in East Asia, with 37% of women aged 20 to 49 being married by the age of 18. Moreover, the country has one of the highest adolescent birth rates in the region, with 83 births per 1,000 girls aged between 15 and 19. This number is even 136 per 1,000 in rural areas. We call on the United Nations and this Council to do its utmost to protect the fundamental rights of children in Laos through education, to be free from child labor, and to save them from the plight of child marriage and predicament of early pregnancy. The young generation of Laos deserves no less. Thank you, Madam President.
Je vous remercie. Je donne la parole à Civicus.
Mr. Vice President, we note that the government of Laos PDR has accepted the majority of the recommendations it received during this UPR cycle. However, we regret that the government has not accepted several key recommendations related to fundamental freedoms and protection of human rights defenders. Following the second cycle UPR in 2015, Laos PDR committed to reassess its restrictions on fundamental freedoms in line with the ICCPR. However, the government's actions since then stand in stark contrast to these commitments, as well as constitutional guarantees of these rights. New amendments to the Media Act introduced in 2016 further consolidate the government's absolute control over the media. The government continues to criminalize criticism using unwarranted criminal defamation charges on the basis of protecting national interests. Women human rights defender Hoi Heng Zheburi, known as Moi, was sentenced in November 2019 to five years imprisonment for a Facebook post criticizing the slow response of the government in providing assistance to communities displaced by flooding in August 2019. And the new decree number 238 on associations introduced in November 2017 grants the government broad powers to control or prohibit the formation of associations, to monitor and contain their activities and finances, and to dissolve associations on arbitrary grounds without rights of appeal. We call on Laos PDR to create and maintain in law and practice an enabling environment for CSOs, media, journalists, and human rights defenders by appealing or reviewing or repressive legislation in accordance with international standards. We regret the government's failure to accept key recommendations to effectively investigate the enforced disappearance of Sombat Somfon. Given the government's protracted failure to disclose any new information about the investigation since June 2013, we call on Laos to establish a new independent and impartial investigative body to determine his fate and whereabouts. We further call on the government to publicly set out a comprehensive, measurable, and time-bound action plan for the implementation of UPR recommendations in full cooperation and consultation with civil society. Thank you.
Je vous remercie. Je donne la parole à Society for Threatened Peoples.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Society for Threatened Peoples welcomed the engagement of Laos PDR with the UPR mechanism. We regret that Laos PDR did not accept key recommendations affecting indigenous and minority's rights. We would like to draw this council's attention to the systematic persecution of the Hmong people in Laos PDR. Facing the risk of discrimination policy, persecutions, and military violence, large number of Hmong community fled Laos to Western countries or attempted to seek refugee in neighboring countries during the previous decades. The remaining Hmong have been excluded from the Laotian society, and a part of them were forced to hide in the Laotian jungle. Today, from those who fled to the jungle, only small groups such as the Chaufa in the Phoebia area are left due to an active persecution that they still suffer today. Mr. Vice President, the Hmong people endure state persecution and are often victims of violent attacks and enforced disappearances. For example, since 12 March 2020, two Hmong minors and their accompanying adults, an 80-year-old man and a young lady, have been missing. The group was trying to flee the severe starvation and the constant military attacks. They were last seen at the checkpoint in Paxan. Two weeks later, the car transporting the group at the time of their disappearance was found with the two dead bodies of the drivers inside bearing marks of torture. Mr. Vice President, unfortunately, this is just one of the many stories of gross human rights violations against the Hmong people in Laos PDR. Nevertheless, the Laotian authorities continue to deny the existence of the issue and refuse to have any meaningful dialogue. Therefore, we take this opportunity to alert the international community of this issue and to call for an investigation of the human rights violations in the region. We also request the government of Laos PDR to do the necessary investigation to clarify the whereabouts of the missing group. I thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Il s'agit du dernier orateur sur notre liste. Avant de donner la parole à la délégation de la République Democratique Populaire Laos pour ses remarques finales, permettez-moi de noter que, sur la base des informations fournies, sur les 226 recommandations reçues, la République Democratique Populaire Laos a accepté 160 et en a noté 66. Je donne à présent la parole à son excellence Monsieur Khan In Kichadet pour ses observations finales. Vous avez la parole, excellence.
Mr. Vice President, excellencies, once again, on behalf of the Laos delegation, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to all distinguished delegates, representatives of international organizations and non-cabaretto organizations, for their participation and contribution to the UPR process of the Laos PDR. I would like to sincerely thanks to all delegations for their constructive assessment of the Laos PDR achievement in the area of human rights and for their understanding of the constraints and challenges faced by the Laos PDR in the national efforts to promote and protect human rights for the Laos people. Despite the overwhelming positive feedback, we also observed that some comments were found to be based on incorrect information and or misunderstanding of the reality situation in the Laos PDR. The Laos PDR has gained a lot of experience from this UPR undertaking through the interactive dialogues and exchange views. The UPR process provides an opportunity for the Laos PDR for move forward in our endeavor to promote and protect human rights at a national level and for further cooperation and share-based practices with the international community to advance the cause of human rights globally. Mr. Vice President, the Laos PDR as a member of the United Nations is committing itself to realizing the promotion and protection of human rights through the implementation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the human rights treaties to which the country is a party. As a way of accepting UPR recommendations, the Laos PDR look forward to continue incorporation and exchange of experiences on human rights with the international community and hopes that the international community will also continue to support our efforts, including the implementation of the UPR recommendations. In conclusion, on behalf of the Laos delegation, I would like to express my deep appreciation to you, Mr. Vice President, for your admirable leadership and guiding the human culture a great success. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all distinguished delegates for their kind presence and contribution. My sincere thanks also go to the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights, the Troika, Indonesia, Italy, and Democratic Republic of Congo, the UPR secretariat interpreters, and all the people who have facilitated this such successful today. I thank you, Mr. Vice President, for your kind attention.
Merci, excellence. Je vous remercie pour votre présentation et pour la participation constructive de la République Democratique Populaire Laos dans le processus de l'EUPE. Je propose que le Conseil adopte la décision relative au document final de l'examen périodique universel de la République Democratique Populaire Laos tel qu'elle apparaît sur l'écran. Je ne vois pas d'objection. La décision est adoptée. Merci.